Becky Curtis, Mayor Julia Ostman, Mayor Roy Estes.
Thank you. Next item on the agenda is public participation. If anybody wishes to address the council, please come to clerk. Sign your name and you have five minutes to address the council.
I signed in early. On behalf of the Chamber of Commerce, I just wanted to share my excitement for partnership with the city, for what we're doing to work on projects together and, you know, the great work that the agents have done, you know, we've done in partnership. We're excited that the Chamber will be able to do that. We're excited tonight, the manager's report, to be able to present to you all the first Chamber Initiative project. And we're really excited for the inaugural line to be for the Cameron Regional YMCA. YMCA serves as a community building, basically, for our Cameron. And it's our community movie theater, right? You know, it's our kids' evening, it's after-school care. It's where grandparents come and see their grandkids play ball whether they remember or not. And the front doors needed to be replaced for a long time in the front. They were heavy, they were going to stick. And it's an eighty-six hundred dollar project that's going to be brought through. And we all know the economic impacts of the last year and how that's affected the YMCA. And so whenever there's a chance or opportunity to be able to do projects like that, you know, Mayor Janet has a great job being able to follow through with those type of projects. She was able to follow through with this Chamber Initiative to be able to look to see about this project in action. What a great thing to be able to use by building a magnificent theme here for our residents and by having handicap accessible doors with, by doing on this project anyway. It's just, I think it's just the perfect project for the first Chamber Initiative. So Steve Young, very much, and I just wanted, as part of the Chamber, just to be able to say what my excitement was for it, to Barbara, sorry, Barbara Conner is also part of the Chamber, she's here giving her support as well. And we just wanted to really say that we appreciate the partnership, we're excited about the Chamber Initiative, we're so excited about our future projects together and look forward to this being a long way. I've been able to have a conversation with all of you at all different times and I see the care and commitment that everybody has for the city, for the community, and mostly the community in general. And I appreciate you all sharing all that with me. And I think you all know the need for the same line. So, anyway, I don't know if I have, that's all I want to just extend my gratitude.
Well, we really appreciate this conference. Thank you.
Banner's hold, Curtis.
Yeah, yeah.
Another joint project, so we're, we're.
All right, is there anybody else for public participation? Okay, seeing none, we'll now move to the consent agenda. Are there any requests to move by to the consent agenda to the record agenda? Seeing none, clerk will read the items of consent agenda.
Item A, motion to approve the minutes of the December twenty-first, 2020 regular session.
Thank you. Chair, would you pay the motion to pass the consent agenda?
So moved.
Second.
Moved and seconded. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries, five in favor, zero opposed. Next item on the agenda is the manager's report from the [inaudible]. I lost mine. Yeah. Thank you. Sorry. Yes, and if there are some [inaudible].
Thank you very much, Mayor. I have the manager's report here that I wanted to go over a little bit with you, and you have it in your packet. But I'm a little, I'm always a little tense challenged when I write these because I write these to go out to you on Thursday and I talk about things in the future tense, and then I come here and I report them to you and I have to report them in the past tense. And I hope you understand that. For example, the note I sent was that I was announcing that the city council meeting would be on January twentieth, which we had, it started ten minutes ago. So I have those things in there, but I put them in there ahead of time so you'll know a lot of them ahead of time, even though they're overtaken by events oftentimes when we have a meeting. The next item I have on there, I wanted to note that this is the December financials report, which you have in your report, and we see this every month, and you can look at these and you see some of these seem to be strangely out of track because it's the end of the month and at this point it's the end of the quarter and we should be twenty-five percent spent. But if you look down there, for example, the band is zero percent spent. And we understand that because we haven't had any band concerts. I also, though, wanted to point it out, the Stormwater Fund is one hundred and eighty-one percent spent, even though we're only twenty-five percent through the year. And oftentimes you'll see things like that and they sometimes deserve an explanation, so I want to point them out occasionally when they come up. In the Stormwater, for example, was we had the growth stream projects to be paid for. It was funded in the previous year, but it spilled over into the current year. So those expenditures which were budgeted in the previous year now came into the new calendar year, so even though it's one hundred and eighty-one percent spent, it's because one hundred and fifty percent of that was last year's money that was spent this year. It doesn't mean that the Stormwater Fund is one hundred and forty percent in deficit. We're just using last year's money to build over to this year. The next thing I wanted to make a note of was, which is in your packet, is the COVID-19 update. And what we do each report is we list the number of COVID-19 cases in all of the surrounding area, and you'll see in Kansas City and Buchanan County and those things. But really what we do is we concentrate here on the ones that are primarily in the city, and that is Clinton County and DeKalb County. And what you can see is that we went for new cases, and new cases in Clinton County went from forty-four to sixty-nine, and DeKalb County went from twenty-three to thirty-seven. So there was a bit of a spike. If you look at the chart that is attached to it, what those blue charts show is each one of those turning points, a high point or a low point, is a seven-day increment. So when you look at that chart, you will see that that's what happened in the past seven days. So for example, if you look at the first one in Clinton County, you're actually looking at one, two, three, four, five, six weeks. Each week it changes. Overall, however, all of those are generally more down than they're up. They have their spikes, but that angle is kind of going down overall. Now, I'm not one to address what the causes of that might be and what the prediction is, but I just want to let you show that so that if there's any, if there's any huge difference, it might be a cause for alarm, you would see that. But we just track that every week so you can take a look at it. The next thing I wanted to talk about for a moment then was what was talked about here earlier, what Tony Clark talked about, and that was the Chamber of Commerce Initiative project. And in accordance with Resolution 2020-38, the Chamber of Commerce is recommending a Chamber Initiative project of assisting the YMCA in placing handicap accessible doors at their facility. And that would be in the amount of five hundred dollars from the city's Community Projects Fund. Just to review what Resolution 2020-38 said was, the Chamber would put in five thousand dollars to be matched by five thousand dollars of the city, which is in that resolution. And that would be to take care of approximately ten projects. So they would do ten and the city would do ten, and each doing five hundred dollars, that would be about a thousand dollars for ten projects. And that was the prediction, more or less, based upon what comes forward. The first one here, if you remember, we did one project, the banner project, which was not actually from this category, but it was similar to that because it was a collaborative project. This is the first one that we're doing that actually comes out of this five thousand dollars for the Chamber Initiative, and that is five hundred dollars from the county to be matched by five hundred dollars for the Chamber to move towards placing the YMCA project of handicap doors in place. That project is more than that thousand dollars, it's eight or nine thousand dollars. But whatever the cost is, we're assisting in that project by the thousand dollars, five hundred from the Chamber and five hundred from the city. As was indicated in Resolution 2020-38, however, I'm required to bring that back to the council, and so I'm bringing it back to you now. I'm making that recommendation and asking for your approval, but I would ask for a motion and a vote for the record.
So moved.
Seconded.
Moved and seconded. Any discussion? Okay, seeing none, we proceed to vote. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Nay.
Okay, motion carries. Three in favor, two opposed.
Okay. The next item I wanted to note was large trash pickup. We talked about this for a number of weeks. The Public Works Committee met and recommended that we do an additional, and we will call it a no additional charge pickup, so there won't be any fee for it. A large trash pickup and done in the spring, similar to what was done last spring. This can be funded out of our current solid waste budget and requires no budget amendment. And for this, it will not require council action since it's within the true budget, but I just wanted to let you know that that is what we are proposing doing based upon the recommendation of the Public Works Committee. And unless there's some objective objection from the council, staff can continue to carry that out. And again, to make it for the record, I would ask for then a motion, the second, just so we have it on record while we are doing that.
So moved.
Seconded.
Moved and seconded. Discussion?
Did the committee say that there were going to be five and the five items to be dropped off? Is that something that we're voting on now? Is that, it's not in here, but didn't I say that?
I think we did talk about that.
It's my understanding that we just basically had moved away from any possibility of having curbside of our trash at this time, and this was an alternative. But the fine details of it, I don't think we.
I just want to make sure. We talked about it, and the reason that we talked about it was because, at the end of the day last time, not everybody got to get their trash into a, whatever you call it, roll-off plate of help. And we wanted to make sure that everybody that wanted to get trash in it had the opportunity to do that. And I know last year was just kind of a, you know, trial by error, but that was one of the things that we found out was that not every, because of the number of rollouts that we ended up having and the number of people that came, not, there were people in line and did the deposit the trash. So that's kind of why we talked about that.
My question is, is that a part of what we're voting on?
I don't know.
No, it's not. What the committee did was they talked about doing the large trash pickup in the spring, similar to what we did last year, and allowed them time for the staff to go ahead and put out a memorandum of understanding or something on that, so there will be some direction to it. But they left with details to be worked out. And we'll bring that back to you.
I just want to make sure we've been clear in this all the way.
Yes, and those things are issues that need to be worked out.
Any questions, comments?
Well, I just have one more problem about that. One of the other things that was talked about was trying to even out a town bringing their sense. And if you've only got five items, they're your five items, then maybe you won't take somebody else's there. But that was part of the [inaudible]. So, we're going to have a discussion.
All right, well, we'll go ahead and proceed to vote on that. On that, all those in favor, please signify. I think.
We did.
Oh, we got [inaudible].
Yeah, I thought we had one on four. Okay, all right, so we'll go ahead and proceed to vote. All those in favor of authorizing a large trash pickup, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries, five in favor, zero opposed.
Thank you very much, Mayor. And the last item I would have here is for information, and that is I would like to congratulate Officer Dustin McCloud in the Police Department who was selected for position of sergeant, and he actually began that on January sixteenth.
Great.
Thank you very much. Unless anybody has any questions, that concludes my report.
Questions, comments, and management.
Thank you.
All right, that concludes the manager's report. I think we, I don't think we have anything extra to add. Okay, we'll go ahead, and that moves us into the next item. Unfinished business. We have a first reading that is postponed from December twenty-first, 2020. This is Bill 2020-48 on first reading.
Bill 2020-48, an ordinance of the City Council of the City of Cameron, Missouri, amending the Cameron Code of Ordinances by clarifying the provisions of Section 2-81 and enacting Chapter Two, Article Eight, creating the Cameron Community Center Board.
Okay, Chair, would you pay the motion to pass Bill 2020-48 on first reading?
So moved.
Seconded.
Moved and seconded. Discussion?
Thank you very much, Mayor. This was postponed from the last meeting and it was reworked a little bit. So what happens is this ordinance actually has three parts to it that answers all of the questions. The first part of it is the change to Section 2-81, and that makes a slight amendment to it, which makes several kinds of boards not requiring residency in the city. The reason for it is, it says that certain things are exempted, and one thing that is exempted is boards that are set up by their own implementing ordinance. And then those boards, which would be ad hoc boards, then follow the requirements of the implementing ordinance. Then the second part of that, of this ordinance, has such an ordinance in it which establishes the Cameron Community Center Board, and it then is one of those boards that comes under that first section, which says it will be established and follows the requirements of the ordinance which implements it. And the third thing then is the item which then rescends the agreement of leasing the property to the Cameron Community Center. And what that does then is it puts it back under the control of the city. So the last two parts of that, the appointment of the board and rescinding of the agreement for the leasing of the property, are the same as we had last time. What we did in the first part, though, is we changed that to do those two, to do two things. One of them is that we have an application for all of the board members, and they have signed the Code of Conduct. I think the city clerk could pass that out and so everybody has a copy of that, with, I think, the exception of one, and the reason that individual is isolating, but said as soon as the isolation is over, they will get that back to us. The second thing it does, then, it sets up the ad hoc board that allows some boards then to not have city residents. One thing the council was asked, members of the council, is that there could be some other issues requiring for a board. For example, the number of boards that a person could sit on, or whether a city employee could sit on a board. Those are questions that should be answered, and I promised the city council that we'll bring that before the Policy and Procedures Committee to perhaps look at amending Section 2.81 to have a more full encompassing of all the things that would have to do with the board. But for the purpose of this action, which is to move the responsibility of the community center back to the city or to the city, those aren't requirements for that action, but I have said that we will bring that back up, those issues back up again under the Policy and Procedures Committee, and the council can look at those other issues, but they do not bear upon this action tonight.
Okay, great.
Thank you.
Are there questions or comments?
I just want to thank the council for promoting this because this was something that needed to be addressed and clarified for future council members as to what boards consist of, and I appreciate it very much. I appreciate Patrick and the city manager for working on that and bringing us some clarification.
Thank you.
If there's no other questions or comments, we will go ahead and proceed to vote. All those in favor of passing Bill 2020-48 on first reading, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries, five in favor, zero opposed. All right, that will conclude unfinished business. Next item on the agenda is new business. We have a full reading on Bill 2021-1.
Bill 2021-1, an ordinance authorizing the mayor of the City of Cameron, Missouri, to enter into a lease agreement with Missouri Highways and Transportation Commission for ground surface for a welcome to Cameron sign.
Thank you. Chair, would you pay the motion to pass Bill 2021-1 on full reading?
So moved.
Seconded.
Moved and seconded. Discussion?
This is a House committee item. This is for lease from [inaudible] for our entry marker, I can do that, thirty-six and this is thirty-six. And I think we redo it every forty-five years, so this is just to end the five-year anniversary.
Somebody tell me, just [inaudible] how much that thing costs? Ish? You may now. There we have them. There, we have one out here coming from St. Joe.
I know the one that's out there, we paid for [inaudible] a hundred dollars to be here.
At thirty-five or thirty-six?
Yeah.
Is that the one we're talking about here?
No. Because this is just for [inaudible]. I don't know that there's a cost involved.
A dollar?
A dollar.
Was it a dollar?
I have a hundred.
I think it's not. I'm not aware of being [inaudible].
The other one is on private property, that's why we have to get the permit for that one. But this is just an agreement with them to use a [inaudible]. They don't know that I've ever paid.
All right, if there's no other questions, comments, we'll go ahead and proceed to vote. All those in favor of passing Bill 2021-1, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries, five in favor, zero opposed. Chair, would you pay the motion to suspend the rules and pass Bill 20-1, 2021-1 on a second reading by [inaudible]?
So moved. Seconded.
Moved and seconded. Discussion?
Darlene Breckerman.
Yes.
Becky Curtis.
Yes.
Julia Ostman.
Yes.
Roy Estes.
Yes.
Dennis M. Clark.
Yes.
Bill 2021-1 passes, five in favor, zero opposed. Okay, the next item on the agenda is a full reading on Bill 2021-2.
Bill 2021-2, an ordinance for the City of Cameron, Missouri, authorizing the general election to be held on sixth April, 2021, fixing the polling places of said election and directing the city clerk to cause ballots to be printed and election supplies prepared for said election.
Thank you. Chair, would you pay the motion to pass Bill 2021-2 on full reading?
So moved. Seconded.
Moved and seconded. Discussion?
Opening for candidacy began December fifteenth, it closed yesterday. We have had three people apply for the general election again in April, John Ingram, Becky Curtis, and Quentin Lovejoy.
If there's no other questions or comments, we will go ahead and proceed to vote. All those in favor of passing Bill 2021-2 on full read, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries, five in favor, zero opposed. Chair, would you pay the motion to suspend the rules and pass Bill 2021-2 on a second reading by [inaudible]?
So moved. Seconded.
Moved and seconded. Discussion?
I just might say that we do this on full reading because I think I have to certify this to both counties before next Tuesday, if that's what the question is.
Thank you.
Becky Curtis.
Yes.
Julia Ostman.
Yes.
Roy Estes.
Yes.
Dennis M. Clark.
Yes.
Darlene Breckerman.
Yes.
Bill 2021-2 carries, five in favor, zero opposed. Next item on the agenda, we have a presentation, Toni Segelman, Gilmore Bell Finance Involved for the Park Ordinance.
Mr. Mayor, councilmembers, I have the honor of introducing Toni Segelman, Gilmore Bell. She has been part of our legal counsel for several years, and she is assisting us with this new ordinance that we're voting on tonight for the pool and refinancing. And with this brought to the air tonight, if you have any questions, you will get the correct answer.
Okay, all right. Thank you. You have the floor.
[inaudible]. Maybe, so you can. I'm happy to be here tonight, and it's good to see so many of you who I've seen before, and it's great to see Barbara [inaudible]. We've worked with her for a number of years. But, so the ordinance before you is to implement the financing of your swimming pool project. The first, about seven million dollars of this financing is for that project. That was the original financing that we started working on, I don't know, a month or six weeks ago. And then the investment banker, Charlie [inaudible], identified a potential refinancing opportunity that would save the city some money. And so the refinancing of the 2012 certificates of participation was rolled into this. And so, it's a two-part. So if we start off with just the part that was the swimming pool improvement financing, the structure of this from a legal standpoint is, it's not a law because you have to go to [inaudible]. And so this is a lease purchase financing, which I'm sure you know, a lease purchase financing is authorized in Missouri. You have to annually renew this. That's what keeps it from getting dead, and that requires overapproval. But it's extremely common way of [inaudible] improvements you all [inaudible] for in that the original stormwater answering projects from 2012 financing statement. And so, so the swimming pool project, because it encompasses, or involves [inaudible], and so that will involve a lease from the city to the trustee bank that is acting out of the investors. They'll [inaudible] around this interest in the property where the swimming pool is located. And so you need a lease back and a lease purchase agreement to the city for the financing term. Financing term is expected to be [inaudible].
Yes.
And, and yeah, [inaudible]. But, so, you know, the swimming pool essentially is sort of that, the collateral for that. The financing proceeds will be placed in an account with the trustee, and then the city needs to draw up on that to create a project, plus a legal project, just submit a requisition to the trustee. On the refinancing side, essentially what we're doing is just rolling this into a single financing with the swimming pool, saving money and cost officials. You know, if you do two separate financings at different times, it's going to, you will incur significantly more cost in that upfront side of the financing. So, good idea to go a little together, that those cops, certificates of participation are prepaid, we begin April first of this year. So, you know, in case you wondered to know, and quickly, if you've done this [inaudible] earlier, you will [inaudible]. The tax that's preventing from refinancing more than money gives [inaudible]. So this is a good time for that, you know, not the investment banker or the [inaudible] but I'm sure [inaudible] will tell you that, you know, this is a really prime opportunity to come in and refinance. The ordinance that we have in front of you does not accrue to [inaudible] interest rates and all for financing, but it gives parameters for those. And that will allow DA Davidson then to go out and start their bargaining process. They'll start later this week, they're going to finalize the [inaudible] on Friday, and then as soon as you have your second reading and final approval of this ordinance, then they will. then they will go into the market and finalize all of the interest rates. And all of that will be done according to the parameters that are included in this ordinance. And then those, those will be final, I think it's going to be final on the first, something like that. So the parameter for the savings for example, you hear, nobody knows what interest rates are going to be, it bottoms out and it can only go up, nobody knows when. But the parameter in the documents for the savings is that you have to achieve at least ten percent savings over the present amount of your existing debt service. That's realistic. I mean, in our business, investment bank, which typically would never come to you with very competitive financing, if they couldn't get at least three percent savings. So the ten percent is realistic. And the latest preliminary numbers that Charles Zinnick ran, and, and I saw last week, they were presented in the teens. So depending upon where you want to get the funding.
I just wanted to interject, and you guys got on the first five or six pages of that ordinance. I have like a four hundred page document here. If anybody really wants to look at it, you're welcome to do so. I did not let Hill.
Include it in the back?
Yeah, I did not include any more trades, but you're, you're welcome to look at it at the last second.
Thank you.
So what you provided, Sheldon, was the actual ordinance.
Just the ordinance.
And what, what you have inside of all the documents, the debt. So, yeah.
Are there questions or comments? Well, thank you for having us. Appreciate the present day.
Happy, happy to do it. Happy to work with you. Sorry to interrupt you.
Okay. The next item on the agenda is a first reading on Bill twenty twenty-one dash three.
Bill twenty twenty-one dash three, an ordinance authorizing the city of Cameron, Missouri, to enter into a lease purchase transaction for the purpose of providing funds to refinance certain outstanding lease purchase obligations of the city and finance the construction of a new municipal pool complex and clearing the execution of certain documents in connection therewith.
Thank you. Chair, do you entertain a motion to pass Bill twenty twenty-one dash three on first reading?
So moved.
Second.
Moved to second. Discussion?
Mr. Mayor, I would just like to state that the payments or the repayment sources of these instruments will be from sales tax revenues that was voted in by our citizens in June of twenty twenty, and that will take care of the pool and park portion that's soon to be coming. And then the sales tax for the stormwater transportation will continue to provide for payment of the refinancing portion of this instrument. Isn't that coming up for renewal in twenty twenty-two? Or about eighteen months out, I wonder if we received the documentation from the Department of Revenue that will be coming out, so.
I did include that in everybody's package, this is, you know, to keep it in the front of your mind, and sometimes make sure if we want to continue that, we'll have to get that on the ballot.
And, and that is the transportation sales tax, not the stormwater sales tax. And the transportation debt, I believe, will be, it equals the transportation sales tax revenue coming in.
Yes. That, that is correct. The portion of the refinancing attributable to the swim improvements, the final maturity of that is twenty twenty-two. So, thanks, I'll tell myself.
Good point. Any other questions or comments? We will go ahead and proceed to vote. All those in favor of passing Bill twenty twenty-one dash three on first reading, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Five in favor, zero opposed. Thank you again for coming up and explaining to us. Okay. The next item on the agenda is Resolution twenty twenty-one dash one.
Resolution twenty twenty-one dash one, a resolution for the city of Cameron, Missouri, to accept a proposal from J. and N. Handyman and Construction for the construction of a fence of the water treatment plant.
Thank you. Chair, do you entertain a motion to pass Resolution twenty twenty-one dash one?
So moved.
Second.
Moved to second. Discussion?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. In two thousand and eighteen, the American Water Infrastructure Act was enacted, and therefore that had a whole new rental recommendation requirements for our waterfront drinking water, and most notably section two zero one three. And what that requires is requires us to do a risk and contingency assessment, and that, that assessment has to be done by, by June of this year. Once that assessment is completed, then we'll have six months to do a registry response plan and take a look at that. We were able to work with NPUA and to collaborate with other municipalities that are facing these, these new requirements, and we kind of worked together and, and to kind of, not only streamline the process, but to, to share resources and then to, to be able to tackle the new requirement. Again, that, that resiliency assessment, again, required us not only to look at, you know, natural hazards that could affect our, our treatment plan, but also we have to look at, you know, monitoring practices, our financial, our security, chemical storage, operating maintenance, a bunch of it. But the big one is the resiliency of our water treatment facility, and that includes, you know, piping, physical barriers, water source, things of that nature. And then, and then obviously, like I said, our response plan will have to include strategies on, on how we're going to improve the resiliency and physically secure and secure our facility. So with that being said, and again, Paul, I, we actually have a, have a training tomorrow to, to, to go over some more of these issues and work on that. Obviously, it will be something that we'll, we'll continue to work on for the next several months to get that done before, before the deadline in June. But one of the things that obviously we've identified in our capital plan and told us a good job with the plan, we've got, we've got a multi-year capital plan and projects planned out there, but one of the items was a perimeter fence out of our treatment plant. That's something the DNR have been asking us to do for, for several years. Well, now, not only the state is kind of asking us now, federal government is now saying you need to do this. So again, it was something that we included in our budget, it was included in this year's budget, so we did solicit bids for that, but we only got three bids back. And I did, they were, they were kind of sporadic bids, so I did, I believe Sheldon passed that kind of the bid that we used to evaluate those. But like I said, we kind of had to piece them together because there's several parts to, to, to this project. We do have to take out the old fence that's around the substation. One contractor didn't want to do that, one contractor did include it, but said you could do it, you know, material time. So again, we kind of had to kind of put it all together. Again, basically it came down to the J. and N. Handyman, it was the chief of order. I think it is, the, the ordinance that are actually bid is sixty-three thousand. I think it can be a little bit less because they had some tax on a few things, I think we can, we can, we'll take care of that. So actually, it should be, should be a little bit less than what the, what the resolution did. Again, it was something that wasn't in our budget, and like I said, I would ask for your promotion to approve so we can move forward. It will be done some days. Like I said, we've got other work that we need to do. One reason we did kind of put it off, we were working with the, the, waiting for the grocery project to, to be completed, and now that's down, that, like I said, now we, we can move forward with this. But we've got some, got some driving elements we've got to change and some things that we've got to do. But we do want to get, get started. And again, one thing not included with this, but this contractor will do is have then redo the fence around our substation after walking in land, it's all there to get, so we want to get them started with that.
Other questions or comments? Okay. Single, we'll go ahead and proceed to vote. All those in favor of passing Resolution twenty twenty-one dash one, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Five in favor, zero opposed. Okay. Next item on the agenda, Resolution twenty twenty-one dash two.
Resolution twenty twenty-one dash two, a resolution for the city of Cameron, supporting and approving of the submission of a matching grant to fund certain improvements to Harris Street.
Thank you. Chair, do you entertain a motion to pass Resolution twenty twenty-one dash two?
So moved.
Second.
Moved to second. Discussion? Yes, Director.
Yeah. Thank you, Mayor, Council. Just quick overview of the attached resolution in front of the council is intent to see funding through the Missouri Department of Transportation with the Transportation Alternative Program, otherwise known as a TAC grant for sidewalks along Harris Street. This is a project involved placing some old sidewalks, also filling in gaps where there are hardly no sidewalks. The selection of Harris Street was made specifically for, it is kind of a, this is kind of a material through the community congestion activity. We put this to the public board's committee. Our initial proposal was eight street to Prospect Street, the bottom was our initial. For reasons you see the base versus optional, this work, we're looking after a four hundred thousand dollar funding. And in Northwest District, there's only approximately four hundred fifty thousand, so that's about twenty counties competing against the Maryland St. Joseph's. So just in case there is another storm project and a good grant is written, we want to make sure that we're all are done, but still eligible and able to show that we could do some of the projects. So that's what you're looking at when you see a base project versus optional. We're hoping that we receive the full four hundred thousand dollar funding and grant, but if we don't, we'll, we'll go after the base. So this is kind of what we presented, and go to the next one. Public Board Committee took a look at this, brought some really good points. You know, we were really focusing again where this area is at specifically. This is Upland right here, so that puts our elementary and all our schools, Park Avenue, our golf courses, football fields, school baseball fields, Carson Recreation, all of that areas. The Public Board Committee asked that we drop, instead of turning on both sides all the way up, to get a bigger panel, a bigger stretch, and they asked if we could store all the way down to Nucleus and then connect all the way up to eight street. So that's again what we're just looking at now. Optional is the blue, and red would be our base project. And we're submitting for this, everything, both red and blue, which is in case, because it is going to be highly competitive for us to work, and four hundred thousand or four hundred fifty available for the entire Northwest District. What makes this good, this is our, our current map of our sidewalks, with approximately twenty-seven miles of sidewalks in our community. You can see now here, Lakeview, Four Hills there. We've been, Council, you guys have been aggressively working on investment connectivity over the past couple of years. So with Harris Street project, you can see that we have no sidewalks there or a lot of four all the way down connecting to. We've got good sidewalks around our schools, tying in, eight street ties them to new sidewalks of Long A, Ashville, out to other subdivisions, a large housing area here, and then also back into our downtown. So we'll continue to work on that. You may send out, it may say we can order something out, we'll put it on our, our website, I work with local paper, and maybe put something out so we can do a questionnaire, just kind of get some public input on pedestrian connectivity and how they can do this Harris Street corridor and school has children, is very highly shadowed area, and maybe driven that area, and schools getting out and running in session, there's, there's always students walking or there aren't no sidewalk. So, and do this is one of our priorities. Our, our total budget comes up to five hundred thousand dollars. So the TAC grant is eighty, twenty, eight percent, twenty percent match. That means we would have a total of five hundred thousand dollar project, that's four hundred thousand dollars in grant funding, meaning that we, the city has to come up with another hundred thousand dollars to match. So since the council had the community project funds, the Public Board Committee said that we could use the second phase around the community project funding money as our match for this project. I believe this is a, an exemplary outstanding use of community funds that has a, not only a safety impact, but a huge, as well as aesthetic impact, and other painful and non-changeful impacts with connecting to grocery stores and housing and downtowns and recreation and schools and parks. So that's, that's our funding. We do ask, exactly, tonight before you have this resolution right here, we do ask for a vote as part of the grant requirement, as part of the city requirement, to go after grants, to have the council's blessing beforehand, or else we could have a resolution for the application showing the city council does support going after this grant funding.
One, one question. When was, is the date that the, the grant would be awarded?
Oh, great, great point. Yes, thank you. The announcements would be in March, it's actually March the first available down, it's due a very specific date for the grant award. So we would try to do this, this upcoming year. I think one of us, we've got twenty-three months from March thirty-first to complete it, so if there was something that came up that we couldn't get it in, we still have a little bit of time. But our goal, if we were notified on March thirty-first, would be to do it during this twenty twenty-one construction season.
And that timing works so well for us, because then we'll know at the end of March whether we get this grant or not, and whether we have to take that hundred thousand dollars out of the community president. If we don't, then we do the second round of community projects at the end of very close, we'll know the answer to this.
Are there questions or comments?
This all or nothing?
No, no, that's just slide. That's where, that's where we broke this out, if not all or nothing, there, there is some funding, we've seen this before, I'm sure everybody has, where in four hundred thousand, maybe we're a couple of people, there's maybe two hundred thousand dollars available. You know, that's what we're calling this, our base, which is about half. And then the optional blue is that we're fortunate enough to receive the full amount that we're requesting, four hundred thousand dollars in grant money.
Drew, I just want to thank you. You're very good at giving grant money and going out there and finding solutions. I want to thank the committee because this is exactly what I, I've been fighting for is infrastructure, and I applaud you for telling us that we can take that money for the special projects and put it into that, because that's where it should go. And I, I thank all of you guys for that.
Thank you. Great idea. On the side of the road, we're just stretching it out. Thank you. All right. If there's no other questions or comments, we will go ahead and proceed to vote. All those in favor of passing Resolution twenty twenty-one dash two, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Five in favor, zero opposed. Okay. Next item on the agenda, this is our, this is our second public participation. Everybody wishing to address the council, please go to the court, sign in, and we'll give you five minutes to address the council. Okay. Single. Next item moves us on to comments from the staff. Madam Court.
We already talked about, what was in your patent about the sales tax versus transportation that's expiring, so people have done that. The legislative conference, the MML legislative conference is coming up, February ninth and tenth. So far, Zach and I, we won't be attending. If anybody else wants to go, please let me know as soon as possible, so I can make those arrangements. The second meeting in February is President's Day, and we will be moving that to Tuesday the sixteenth instead. And like I said earlier, the election, I need to certify that by Tuesday, next Tuesday. The deadline to register to vote for the April sixth election is March tenth.
Thank you. Madam?
Nothing further, Mayor. Thank you.
Okay. Chief?
No, thank you, sir.
Chief, what about?
No, sir.
Director?
Director? No, thank you. All right. Quick. You know, the city of Cameron has participated in the Great Northwest State every year, and I don't know if you guys are familiar with the Great Northwest State. The Great Northwest State is an opportunity for legislators to speak with county representation and city staff or, or locals to, to discuss some of the issues that we have in the nineteen county region. This year is going to be different due to COVID-19. Normally, we'll travel down to the Capitol for like a two and a half year event. This year is going to be February first through the third, but what's going to be different about this year is going to be all virtual. There was some discussion amongst the Great Northwest State Committee about whether or not postponing this event or moving forward, keeping it moving forward. We decided to keep moving forward by doing it virtual. Again, like I said, it's going to be February first through the third, it's going to be Facebook Live, most generally. Uh, most generally, we have, uh, contributions from, uh, you know, several counties and organizations contributing towards the Great Northwest State. We're not expecting, you know, everybody to contribute this year because some of the resources have been cut back. So, we're asking people, whatever you can donate, donate towards the cause. And this year, we identify, each year we identify priorities, and we, uh, talk to legislators about those priorities in our communities. And, you know, we identified four priorities this year that I believe that they're, they were geared towards the impact from the pandemic and what's going on, and trying to help, you know, people. I'll just read these off real quick, you know, no certain order, uh, but number one was sustained funding for COVID nineteen recovery and reopening of regional and community assets, basically, basically seeing what type of resources that's out there are available to entrepreneurs, small business owners, to help them to get it out of their feet. Uh, number two was increased full access to mental health and primary care. Again, with the pandemic, a lot of people are probably depressed, uh, or suffering of some illnesses from the pandemic. Uh, number three is support innovation, rural education, early childcare, kick to twelve, higher education in the community. You know, again, with the pandemic, you know, a lot of these schools have had to, uh, change the game plan. You know, most of the kids would be in schools and classrooms, you know, face to face, but now, a lot of the, uh, school districts are going virtual, or the parents are forced to, you know, be, uh, creative as far as making sure that their students are learning and keeping them educated. Uh, number four, uh, ensure in a row access to high, high speed broadband. That was a priority that we discussed last year, it's a new, it's back on the priority list. Uh, again, broadband's important, uh, you know, the care is, the population live at under ten thousand, so we have access to broadband, but some of the people in the further rural area, they might not have access to that. So we want to make sure that because of the pandemic, that those students or families have the same opportunities that we have access to, that they get the same access. So again, uh, the Great Northwest State is going to be February first to the third, it's Facebook Live. Uh, I'm actually going to be hosting it with legislators, uh, in St. Joe with the net weeks. So if you guys can chime in and listen to the legislature, if you guys got comments, you can get those back to me. If you have priorities you want to see, either, you know, discuss next year, please contact me and let me know. Thank you.
All right, thank you. I'm like a fallout mill. Okay. Comments from the Council?
Um, comments, I want to first thank the, uh, committee for the, this community building, the fact that we were able to get that done. That made me, I'm excited to see the committee do what they do best and keep on, like, after all. More, the second thing I wanted to talk about was, um, it was really hard for me to, um, to vote on why it's a five hundred and three C. And, um, even though it was five hundred dollars, it's the fact that it's, it's city tax care funds going to a five hundred and three C, so that, I just wanted to clarify why that was, because I do think it's important where all the money goes for our, our taxing, uh, uh, our citizens and where it goes, and that's what I, that's why I voted in the back of the day. So, anyway, that's all I.
Thank you, Council.
I have a few things. Uh, first of all, I meant to ask, under the management support committee, do this, the water levels, as we're in the water, are we given any sort of a drought condition, so I know we haven't had much moisture?
Um, I wouldn't say we're, we're, we are starting to monitor, I'll, I'll put it, I'll put it that way. Um, again, as, as we said before, we're, we're really just one dry season away from being dangerous. So, you know, at any given time, we're, we're not that far off. So, um, again, Paul, Paul's been monitoring that, and I think they've started doing the, the drought recording. I, I think we were kind, it was kind of starting to show up in this area, but I, I mean, I think we're, we're in pretty good shape considering, you know, where we've been in, in the whole. Yeah, and I tell you, that's, that's the, I mean, we, we always go, well, it's, it's going to rain this spring. Well, if it doesn't rain this spring, then we're, we're back in trouble, you know? So, we're always like, well, it's going to rain this spring, or it's going to rain in the fall. I said, just, there is a lot of, and I see the way from, from trouble. But, but yeah, right now, I, I said, we're, we're okay.
On that, on that same note, uh, I believe that we're, uh, I think we can get the water line out for bid next month. And that will be the salvation.
You will hear a scream, scream for joy to the whole of that.
And Chief Facher, he will congratulate Sergeant McCloud and Detective Miller on their promotions, that they, they are very dedicated and given us many years of service, and we appreciate each and every one of you and tell them congratulations. Um, as you all noticed, I did not file for reelection, and I had no other reason other than I think that I have served this community, and I feel that I served it well. And I want to thank my, um, constituents who voted for me and had confidence in me for three terms. But I, as, it goes, you know, all good things go come to an end, new blood is in the line, and I think that they will be very good, well, whoever wins at what they do. And, um, I just wanted to say thank you to the people who supported me and believed in me. And there are some of you who are probably doing a tap dance, but I'm not running, but that's okay.
Counsel?
Uh, first of all, on that thought, uh, I want to thank Darlene for all of you, because you and your family serve not only the city, but the community. Because part of the community is, I don't think I wear that. And your family's still a big part of this, maybe, and that would hopefully generate. So, that aside, thank you.
Well, thank you, I appreciate that.
Um, as far as stuff going on in the hospital with COVID, we had a few bumps that were positive cases, community-wise, and accounting, and you guys have seen that report. Uh, actual inpatient is not really having the big hits like we saw in November, so whatever you're doing, keep doing it. Worsen hands, stay apart, that's all I got.
I have nothing.
I have nothing also. Um, I don't believe we're going to have a session tonight. No. All right, so, uh, Chair, I entertain the motion, who would be adjourned?
I move.
Second. Moved to second, all in favor of adjourned, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries, five in favor, zero opposed.